To order April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, five thirty P M. Pass please. Give me my room.
Councilman Cannon.
Here.
Councilwoman Bruce Silver.
Here.
Councilman Bruce Silver.
Here.
Councilman Teague.
Here.
Councilman Hardy.
I'm here.
Mayor Joe Warren.
I'm in a corner present. I will ask you to stand for the prayer and the pledge. I will ask Councilman Bruce Silver. I mean, this is a prayer, please.
Please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy name is holy, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and we give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Yeah, thank you. And the pledge, I'm gonna ask John Meyer, a person applying for A P D. So he gets my pledge.
Our pledge is to declare the United States of America an interior republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and everytyne just as one.
Thank you. Okay, um, we will move on to public comments before we do that. Uh, just housekeeping. We usually ask presentations to limit to approximately seven minutes or less. Public comments, any agenda items, three minutes, just to keep the, the meeting moving. Also, you are welcome to leave after your item of business has been handled. Just do so quietly, please, or you're welcome to stay. Thank you. That being said, any public comments on any agenda item prior to moving forward? Hearing none, we'll move on to personnel. Item number one on the personnel, to consider abolishing the classification of public works, equipment, maintenance worker, and municipal employee civil service adopted rules and regulations pending results of the Municipal Civil Service Board Public Hearing to be held on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second, council. Um, as you all know, we're trying to evolve the way we do business here at the city of Abbeville. And as we move into the digital age, we, um, we have, we have, we have recognized that there are some positions that we don't currently have that we need, and some positions that we have used in the past that haven't been used in quite a while. This being one of them. Um, we do have a major need for a digital, a digital technical assistant, digital media assistant, uh, who would be helping with record keeping, digital record keeping, as well as the G I S mapping we're doing with the, the public works department. And so Chris and I, and eventually Ms. Ann Hardy worked on how can we make that happen? And it is our recommendation, as you just moved in second, and to abolish this class so we can create a new position under the public works umbrella.
So, so Mayor, what, what position was this?
I can't tell you the last time this was filled. It's not been filled as long as I've been on council, I don't believe.
Raymond, Raymond, Raymond.
It was Moran, I think.
It was Moran, yeah.
Moran had it too.
So this was at the born?
That was at the born. It's never been filled on, on the meeting.
It was at the Moran.
He must have left just before I got here.
So we're just gonna, we're gonna eliminate it? And I guess you're coming back with some tech.
Right, right. Something, something more, that we need more.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, to consider adding the classification of public works administrative technical assistant into the municipal employee civil service adopted rules and regulations pending the results of Municipal Employee Civil Service Board Public Hearings to be held on April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. I move. Okay, I have a motion and a second. As I, I alluded to in the previous one, this would be basically a technical assistant who would help not just Chris, but Stuart, Larry, all of the team with all their digital record, record keeping as we redo, as we go into the next year with our new accounting system, everything will be digital record keeping. And so we, we identify that the team needs someone dedicated to help them with that at the born. And so that's what this person will do. If, uh, civil service improves it.
And this is gonna be housed at the utility born or the street bridge?
Utility born.
Utility.
Right. You do, when it is going on, um, all the record keeping, uh, inventory ordering, all supplies.
Now that we no longer have an in-house attorney, all of our staff does their, um, their, their, uh, training online. And so that person would help them get available to them if they, make sure that they do their certificates and trainings. Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, to approve the recommendation to appoint Police Department Personnel. Chief Mike Hardy, you're on the floor.
Stand, yeah. Uh, Mayor Councilman, I recommend for hire Mr. John A. Mayor, twenty-one years old. He lives at four eleven Tibby Street in Abbeville. Uh, I checked with his references. The mayor, a couple councilmen, and I talked to him just a little while ago. Very friendly guy, very helpful person, and I recommend him for hire. I move.
Okay, a motion and a second to, um, approve the recommendation of both the chief and myself to hire John Mayor to the position of, um, police officer. Any questions or comments?
Chief, I assume that he's gonna have to go to the cabinet?
Yes, sir.
Uh, under discussion, Mayor, I'd like to add that, uh, Mr. Mayor is the son of a career military mother. So, uh, please tell your family that in the city, we do admire our military, and we hire our military.
I also like to pass on, he's a pretty dedicated worker. He's been working for those since September, and he walks to work, so.
Well, I do too.
But, uh, very dedicated.
All right, any other questions?
I don't have any.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those who are, as well, to the board, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two presentations, and actually, I think I'm gonna kinda, uh, head up both of them. The first one is to recognize Mr. Brian Fisher, the City of Abbeville Code Enforcement Officer. Brian, will you stand up for me? Come up, come up here, I know you love this court. Who was recently promoted to Command Sergeant Major with the Louisiana Army National Guard. For those of you who don't know, Brian is our first, uh, code enforcement officer here at the city of Abbeville. Um, he is pioneering positive change in Abbeville by, uh, helping us to first educate residents, work with them to come into compliance, and when they're not able to come into compliance, moving forward with violations. Uh, as you all know, it's a job that Chris was trying to tackle along with, uh, with our tax department. And it, we, we critically identified that we needed someone that could do it full-time, and Brian stepped up to the challenge. Under his newly established role, it underscores the city's commitment to addressing community issues and moving the city in the new direction by enhancing the beauty and prioritizing health and safety. By enforcing codes and regulations, which is never an easy job, Brian actively contributes to making Abbeville a more beautiful and safer place to live. His efforts are not just about compliance, but also about instilling pride in community and attracting outsiders to experience the charm of Abbeville. Thank you for that, Brian. Brian's second hand is his service to his nation, which spans an impressive thirty years, culminating in his recent promotion to Command Sergeant Major with the National Guard, the highest non-commissioned officer rating. He serves with the distinction as the C S M of two one fifty-six. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Bringing invaluable leadership and experience to his unit. From his early days on active duty to his current role with the Louisiana National Guard, Brian has demonstrated unwavering commitment. His three tours with Infantry Brigade, Brigade, have earned him con- condemnations, decorations, and highlighted his bravery and dedication. Brian, thank you not only for your service to your country, but to the city of Abbeville. We are so blessed to have you on our team. So I just want to recognize that achievement.
Thank you. Abbeville.
Abbeville.
Yes. Uh, so, Abbeville, they have the headquarters company, but it's also the battalion headquarters. So I'll be working out there. I mean, I do a lot of outfield circulation when I go to the units all the way down to Homa, Probridge, spending that area.
Anybody?
Just going to make sure everything's going good. I'm basically kind of a, the voice for the enlisted soldier, making sure that decisions are made that keep their welfare and safety in mind, so.
So sometimes he gets called at the last minute and is not on duty. And, uh, we have pledged to work with him through his schedule so that he gets paid here. So, um, thank you for that, Brian. We agree, enjoy having you as part of the team. And congratulations on that honor. No action needed, just a presentation. Second is to recognize Abbeville firefighter, Mr. Brent Landry, for being recognized as the firefighter of the year by the V F W. Please, please stand. Councilwoman, do you wanna take this? You want me to?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, pick all. So I'm just gonna save the notes that I have. Brent, Brent Landry was hired on August fourth of two thousand seventeen. He was promoted to firefighter first class on November fifth, twenty nineteen. He works as a relief captain when a captain is out on leave. He's trained, he trained in past E M T school. He is preparing for, for a paramedic school. And he was, he won the award for his leadership on shift two. Um, firefighter Brent Landry, congratulations on your honor. We are, we are very blessed to have you as part of our team also. Thank you. Chief, did you have something you wanted to say?
And I just wanted to tell you that I wasn't able to make, your mom had called me. I wasn't able to make it. So I wanted to have you here tonight to let you know that we, as a community, and as the mayor and city council, we support you and we're very proud of you. Thank you for doing an awesome job.
Last year was the first year that we have done these parts of this. So this year, the choice was easy. Uh, leadership, that's the number one thing. Guys gravitate to it. Thanks for being, and I hope we stay working for us for fifty years.
Oh! Thank you.
I just wanna say that some very tough veterans in, in V F Ws, and if they recommended you, I'm sure you deserve it. So congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on, minutes, minutes, approval of bills and budget reports. Item number one, severance minutes for the regular city council meeting held on February sixth, twenty twenty four, on February twentieth, twenty twenty four, March fifth, twenty twenty four, March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, and eighty-second, twenty twenty four. End of committee meeting held on April second, twenty twenty four. I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. Item number two, to ratify bills paid in the month of March twenty twenty four.
Move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, to approve the Budget to Action Report for twenty, March twenty twenty four.
Move.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Use this as item number one, to conduct a public hearing to obtain comments from the public regarding the adoption of ordinance to amend section six thirteen C to remove the word non-consecutive.
Move.
Going through a hearing? Okay, I have a motion and a second to enter into a public hearing. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in a public hearing to hear comments from the public regarding the adoption of the ordinance as so read. Um, for those of you who, who, uh, don't know, or haven't had a chance to read ordinance pertaining to utility extensions, our current, uh, ordinance reads that you can have two extensions a year, but they cannot be consecutive. We're just removing the word consecutive. So if you choose to put them, uh, as two consecutive, we, uh, it's our recommendation to go ahead and allow the property owner to have them consecutively. Any other questions or comments about that? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll take, entertain a motion to close the hearing and reconvene.
Move.
Motion and a second. Um, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, hearing is closed. We are now reconvening the regular city council meeting, and we are in the new item, uh, of business. Item number two, to accept the recommendation of the ordinance committee meeting held on April second, twenty twenty four, to adopt an ordinance to amend section six thirteen C to remove the word non-consecutive.
I move.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, Ms. Dorla Mo of one thousand Thomas to discuss code enforcement. Tell Councilman Tony Hardy, this one's yours.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Mayor and Council, I was contacted yesterday by Ms. Dorla Mo in reference to, uh, some things that were taken from underneath a carport in reference to our old ordinance. And she just wanted to speak to the council about what was going on. And I told her I'd get her on the agenda.
Ms. Dorla? You wanna come up?
Yes.
You can stand right here where, uh, I'll take it if you don't mind. Okay, you have the floor.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I received a letter from Ryan Fisher, um, at the end of January concerning, um, some things at the road in front of my house, um, and also about some things under my carport. Okay, so I called him the next day and spoke to him about it. Um, I told him that we'd always put things to the roads we picked up, and he said he wasn't sure about whether we can put it to the road or can't put it to the road.
What was the item?
It was a chair.
Okay.
Getting rid of a chair.
It's, okay, and it's also, my understanding, there was a lot of things under the garage.
Correct.
That had been piled up.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I lifted the keys up. And, um, and also, I think there was some dog increment on large pile of it on the shoulder.
That was at the road, and I cleaned that up when he told me to.
Okay. And so, so we got a conversation with you about what you were and weren't allowed to put at the road, and...
Yeah, he said, we couldn't put anything in the road.
Brian, you wanna speak to that?
Yes, I explained to her how both the parish and the city ordinance, uh, do not allow for bulk items to be placed at the road. I said that it is kind of a gray area because it also states in there that you have thirty days, a reasonable amount of time, up to thirty days, and that, uh, it's conflicting with what the remaining parish sends out as far as the solid waste pickup, uh, category of, of solid waste. So that, that wasn't the whole...
Right, that's not the entire violation. That's one item of the violation, right? Okay, so I will say this, um, our, our ordinance currently reads you cannot put a whole household of stuff in the road. We, we do not allow that. I realize that yours is one chair. I don't think the violation was about the one chair, though. It was about the totality of what was going on in the property, correct? So I will tell you that you, as a landowner, can put a, a chair at the road for, for the truck to pick up because the police jury allows it. Let me, let me be very clear.
Okay.
If we had our way, we would not allow it in the city because it can't, it shouldn't be allowed to sit at the road for a month, but we don't have control over how they do bucket pickup. Um, but if you put a large accumulation and you let it sit out there for a month, then we're going to ask you to remove it from the road, right? So that, that part is different than everything else that was in the violation, right? So let's address the rest of the concerns from there, okay?
So on, uh, April third, now after this, I never spoke to him again.
Right.
Never heard from him, no letters, no nothing. April third, I get a call at my job telling me there's two people with a trailer backed up under my carport, loading up my items under my carport. I leave work, go home. I don't know these people. I haven't given them permission to come on my property. Don't know who they are. He said we were hired by the city. That's what he told me. No credentials, no nothing.
Mm-hmm.
So I told him, I said, you can't come on my property without my permission and take my things. These were personal items. It wasn't trash, it wasn't branches, it wasn't leaves, it wasn't weeds. It was none of this stuff. And they threw everything on the back of the trailer. And so when I got there, um, I called the police department. And Mike Hardy came out, and I spoke with him, told him what was going on. Um, and so the contractor then called Brian to come out as well. So Brian came out and we had a discussion, and I told him they cannot come on my property and take my personal items.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it pretty much just kinda squashed there. So then the contractor, uh, agreed to leave his trailer there because it had all, all my stuff on it.
Mm-hmm.
So I had to stay away from work, unload the trailer by myself because they left. I told him when I was finished, I'd call him to come get his trailer, and I did that.
Right.
I get a letter Saturday from the city charging me three hundred dollars to pick up weeds, trees, branches out of my yard, which was not done at all. Grass weed and tree removal, property cleanup, three hundred dollars. And I don't feel that's right.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, they didn't pick this up. Second of all, they didn't take nothing off my property.
So let me fill that. It's my understanding, so you received the notice in January, Brian did, did speak with you, and so then you had two months to, to deal with the complaint of the violation at that point, and you, you did not do that, correct?
But there was no, there was no trash. I mean, it wasn't what he was claiming it was.
Well, I mean, there's pictures here of a large accumulation boxes. There's a refrigerator that we actually, there's an ordinance against...
Yes, he told me about that.
Airtight containers being in your yard because it is, uh, it's dangerous for children if they climb in it. Um, I understand that there was some, um, nuisance animals that were housed in there, and that's part of what the problem is.
Correct.
So the reason for, um, this ordinance is that when you have a large accumulation of items stored outdoors like this in an unsecured state, it does tend to, um, you know, attract possums and mice and rats, and it's, it's a hazard to your community, right? And so that is why he processed this violation, right, Brian? I'm speaking for him, but I'm gonna let you speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Um, and so by definition of our nuisance code ordinance, this does fit the definition of nuisance code.
So in other words, I can't have any of my personal items outside of my garage?
No, you can have personal items. That's not, there's a difference between having personal items and having large accumulations of boxes and containers and torques and, right? So I will, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you want us to resolve this. What would you like from the council?
I mean, I've already moved everything. They told me it couldn't be there, so I moved it all.
Right.
But I don't feel like I should have to pay them three hundred dollars for moving nothing.
Well, but once we send a contractor out, because a landowner doesn't come into compliance, then we, we have to charge the, at least the time of the contractor to the landowner. Or do you wanna speak to this as the city attorney?
No, I think you're correct.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't, I mean, that's, that would be the, uh, amount into the giving away of public funds, which you cannot do. Unless that contractor would waive his fee, then we, we can't waive our fee. Who's the contractor, Brian?
Uh, this is Cornelius Penner, he's right there.
Okay, right. How much is the pay?
So this, I, I see what you're saying, though, Ms. Dorla. In fact, this, this invoice from the city says grass, tree, weed removal fee for property cleanup. And it was actually for debris and, um, uh, I'm trying to think how, how it reads. So I do think that the wrong description is on this invoice, but I would, I would need to see what the actual contractor's invoice said, right? This should match with the contractor's invoice.
Yeah, I, I, I can't speak to that, man.
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't process that invoice. Uh, so the whole, the whole thing about the contractor's fee, it was stated in, to Ms. Mo in front of chief and the contractor that we would, at that point, I would allow her to keep her stuff as long as it was moved into an area not visible from the street. She couldn't have, uh, iceboxes or freezers left outside, and she would still have to pay for the contractor's fee because they had already come out. And he was leaving his trailer there to facilitate her getting the stuff off.
Okay, let's, let's say your exact words. He said, I still gotta get paid, and you said, you're gonna get paid. That was it.
Was that invoice, uh, from the city or from the contractor?
This is from the city. We, we don't send the contractor's invoice. The city sends the invoice on the city letterhead, and then the contractor, it's written from the contractor's invoice. So I didn't see the backup of the contractors. I can look at that more.
Man, you can also see that, uh, I went back out there yesterday and took more pictures. Uh, I don't do any less than three, three inspections on any property. I do one for the initial violation. I do one prior to sending out a contractor, and then I do one after the contract is complete so that way I can process it to make sure that it's up to standard and the city's paying for, for quality work. In this case, I went over there yesterday when I found out that this was gonna be coming in front of council, took new pictures, and it still shows that she's in violation of state law of having a deep freezer under the, under the carports, and she hadn't abated any of... Yes, the condition is a lot less than what it was originally, but there's still, uh, violations of city ordinance still out there right now, so. Well, I have a question. What does it say it's against state law to have a deep freezer under your garage? If, if it's a working deep freezer, and she... It's not, it's not. So it's not a working deep freezer. If it was, then it's...
It is working.
Well, it wasn't, it's not plugged in.
I know, but I told you.
It's not plugged in. I'll be right back, if you give me a minute.
So it says state statute fourteen three twenty-four.
If you have it.
Um, abandoning or discharging iceboxes or other air con, airtight containers penalty. It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to leave outside of any building or dwelling in a place accessible to children, any abandoned, unattended, or discarded icebox, refrigerator, or other container of any kind which has an airtight door or doors, or which may not be released or opening from the inside of said icebox, refrigerator, or container. It shall be further unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to leave outside of any building or dwelling in a place accessible to children, any abandoned, unattended, or discarded icebox, refrigerator, or any other container of any kind which is airtight and has a snap lock or other device thereon without first removing said snap lock or locks or doors or door from said icebox, refrigerator, containers. Should any person or firm or corporation violate any of the provisions of this section, they shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor, and a fine conviction shall be high not exceeding a thousand dollars in imprisonment for not in excess of six months of discretion of the court. So that is the state law on airtight containers because children have gotten in them before and, and died in them.
Yeah, it's not completed.
Um, and that's, that's my recollection of why that law exists. I mean, it's part of the, the littering violations by state law, so. Um, so council, I'm, I'm, if we are here to hear Ms. Dorla's comments, I will take a recommendation of any action if you guys want to, uh, take any action on this. But if, I mean, I just wish that was not the problem. I do, because I wish that was not the only problem.
So in other words, no one in this city can have a deep freezer outside? No one?
Nobody in the state.
No one at all?
If it's, if it's plugged in and working, that's a totally different story.
So it can only be outside if it's plugged in?
Why is it sitting under your, under your...
It's some things that came from my aunt that passed away, and I had to clean out her apartment, so I brought her stuff to my house. She doesn't have any other family. Her husband and both her sons have passed.
And so when do you, what do you intend to do with it? Because it's been there for three months now, right, to share it? So what's your intention with the refrigerator, the freezer? Are you gonna put it inside your house, or are you gonna get rid of it?
I'm gonna sell it, yeah.
You're gonna stop it.
Yeah, I made the motion, we do a way of the fund.
If, if, or things we legally can?
I don't think we can. It's, that would amount to a violation of the Constitution. Article fourteen, which says you can't donate or pledge to give away public fund. We can't pay that invoice and then gratuitously say to her, sorry, you don't owe it. You know what I'm saying? Can't do it. It's not, it's not...
One of the problems is, is that they actually didn't move it there.
Well, I think he, I think he put a bunch of stuff on the trailer. I mean, he's got a fee, went out there, he brought his trailer, he put a bunch of stuff. He's got some time and some, some labor in it. And then, uh, you know.
Why was it, was it over? I, I permitted that. That there was such an argument about the stuff. I was the first one to give her the deep freezer, and then she just continued with the argument. And I was like, you know what? Fine, get it off the trailer, up from underneath the carport where it's not visible, Get it off the trailer, up underneath the carport where it's not visible from the street because I gotta pay the contractor's fee."
So in other words, normally in this situation, all of the materials would have been hauled off and disposed of by the contractor. But because she got there and was upset and wanted to keep her stuff, they came to an agreement that the stuff would remain, but she had to put it away. You couldn't leave it in the state. It was under the carport, right?
Correct.
I'm gonna second you because I'm gonna discuss this.
Okay, that's fine. Motion in a second on the table.
We can't discuss without a second. So here's my question. Is there a policy that we call before we go and, like, "Here we are, we're going, put a contractor out there"? Is it like policy that we are calling them just to kind of give them the heads of, "Hey, we're going to your property. We're taking things off of your carport." Not to alert, like she's been alerted by some neighbors that called her and said, "Hey, there's some strangers. They don't know who these people are. They're not in our city shirt." I just worry that we could put our contractors in a position where some people come out and start saying, "Hey, you're stealing something," and next thing you have a problem. So I'm not saying that, you know, we're wrong in this case, but I just want to make sure that I would have been alarmed if somebody would have called me. My neighbors would have been watching out for my neighbor. They'd have called me and said, "Hey, somebody's under your garage picking up something." And it's like a plain Jane, which it could have been the city contracting. So I don't know if that's something that we need to look at.
So this, it is understood by the contractors, and especially if it's a situation where I believe that there's gonna be conflict, I always make sure that they're under the...
But you didn't think there was gonna be conflict? You didn't issue the go, right?
The day that they did the pickup? No, but I had been out there three times.
Okay, but during the pickup, you were not there as opposed to come?
No, I went over there.
Nor was there any policeman there?
Not initially. So she called. She was having, I guess, a pretty heated discussion with the contractor. He called me. I called Chief. Chief had himself and another deputy come over there to meet me. But yes, I did go.
This is not about the contractor. I'm just saying that putting the contractor in that situation where somebody is... We're given a permission to go do this, and then you're...
It happens rather often.
Yeah, it is a good point to think about how do we, you know... The landlord is noticed by regular mail and multiple...
Yes. And they receive both unofficial mail and certified mail.
But some kind of way of identifying.
We actually had telephone conversation about what she needed to do to include the fact that she could keep it under the carport as long as it wasn't visible from the street where she could put up a privacy fence. She couldn't use a tarp as a screen because that's against borders. But there was other methods that I had explained to her how to come to compliance with the ordinance.
Yes, sir. You wanna say?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Cornelius Perrault. I'm the owner of CNS Landscaping and Lawn Care Service LLC. And of course, I'm one of the contractors that works for the city. Upon the arrival of the inmate, we had a real unpleasant discussion. However, I did represent myself. I told my name, but I told I worked for the city. At that point, you know, before I even started, I learned, you know, her neighbors and everything. I told them I worked for the city, you know. I asked them, "Can I leave my lawn mower on the side?" Because, you know, I was supposed to be doing another job. And after I put it down, you know, we just started picking up the material and that. Nonetheless, I was not under the pressure that I would have an issue, you know, because I did, you know, professionally, you know, let them know, let several of her neighbors know that I was working for the city. So therefore, when she came up on the scene, I found it was a professional up, being that I told her neighbors who I was. So therefore, when she came, you know, I was like, you know, it was creating a problem. And not just that, I compromised because upon that same day, I was, you know, inconvened on several other contracts I had to fulfill. So therefore, I felt like when I told Mr. Brian, I just needed to get compensated. We're talking about, you know, the...
The fact is, once we call a contractor out, we're due those charges, right? That's... It's too late at that point to not have those charges. So that is not something we can...
So can I add something?
Yes.
So Ms. Mo wasn't the source of the complaint. There was a complaint that came in about a neighbor down the street. So whenever I get a call about a neighbor, I think back to my days when I was kicking in doors looking for RPGs and they were never gonna be found. But I wasn't gonna allow the office to be used as a mechanism for a disgruntled neighbor to get back another neighbor. So I actually sighted seven different houses on that street that day. And it's just one city block. And the house that I was called out for didn't even have violation of the ordinance that what I was called out for. They had some other stuff. They got it removed. But she was never the source of the complaint. It was just one serious...
Still a ball.
Well, Brian has to take that approach. When there's one call in a block, he looks at the whole block, right? Because the only fair thing, you can't just look at one property. You need to look at all of them. You can't serve a violation of one property and have one right next door that has the same violation and not serve it, which is, in my opinion, your administration of ordinance is in a way of not being prejudiced or showing favoritism. Enforcement is the part of my job I enjoy the least. I will say, I don't like this part of the job. And unfortunately, we never want to have this in the contract. So we always want the property owner to take the action themselves so we don't have to come to this point. That being said, at this point, I don't know how we resolve this situation because we can't waive the contractor's fees. We have to pay those. We can't waive them to her. I will check the contractor's invoice and make sure that the, you know, the money in it and the description on the contractor's invoice reflects the work that was done and not what is on this sheet. And we can resolve that. But I'm not sure how else we can resolve this situation at this point. Happy to hear of anybody that has a suggestion.
Mayor, this is a topic that may come up from time to time because there's nothing unusual about a contractor being called to remedy a property delinquency. So what Brian is talking about tonight has happened many, many, many times. And it's not what the city prefers to handle compliance to an ordinance. But let me remind everybody, the state, the ethics, we have to take courses every year that public funds cannot go to a private citizen. And if there is a violation of that, the state will come after the elected person and the private citizen who received the public funds. So we take courses every year that reminds us of that potential violation.
Mark, the gray area, I mean, we haven't determined anything. Is there any way you can check the state ordinances to see if there's a possible way that we can resolve this without going back and forth?
There... If he submits a bill to the city and we pay that bill?
Well, yeah, I understand that.
We have to pass that along.
Yeah, I understand that.
If we don't, then it amounts to a donation to her of public funds. Taxpayer money. Can't be done. It's not black and white. It's not gray. It's very, very clear.
So the bottom line, you're saying is that we have to pay the contractor although the complainant disagrees with it?
Yes. Yes. That's what I'm saying. I mean, the... You know, if we follow protocol, if we, you know, if he sent her a notice of an ordinance violation and gave it appropriate time and months had passed and he, you know, sends a contract out, we have to pass that bill on.
So what exactly is the timeframe?
Ten days for a violation like that. From the time that you give the letter. Roughly about 13 days from the day I met with him.
And you did receive one in January, or am I correct?
January 29th. Yeah.
It on there except the amount of time you have to come to compliance on those letters, right? It does say that, yeah. It should say at the very end what the date it said, too. It was a 10-day compliance period, and we allowed two months.
I'm gonna withdraw my second.
Is that right? That's what I'm asking, is that right? You said you got it January 29th, and it was April?
I mean, unfortunately, you can. I mean, what you can do is you can...
Right now, we have a motion on the table.
I mean, you can...
I can withdraw a motion, I can make it.
Yeah.
What are you saying, we could what?
All you can do is give her time to pay. I mean, you can't waive the bill. You know?
This is your... I don't want to keep this.
I mean, if you create, you do hardship to pay it at once?
All the trouble I have, that's a freezer, it's mine. It's there. It was more than just a freezer, you really need that, yeah.
But what's done is done.
Yeah.
I mean, if she was sent a notice, if we were complying with our ordinance and procedure, you know, it's done. It's done. It doesn't matter what the violation is at this point. I mean, we've incurred an expense. As a city, we have to... We can't just say, "Oh, you don't owe it."
And I understand that.
I mean, it's unfortunate. I get it. It's not that much money compared to the city budget, but we just can't.
Your mom would ask, that's a lot.
Yeah. Especially if you have to stay away from work to take it off the trailer.
I recommend, since we have been told that we cannot waive the fee, that we, that you just pay the fee, but not all at once if you can afford. Just pay in increments until it pays. I think that would be possible, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I mean, you have to till the end of the year, really, repay it. It's almost, you know, we don't need tax property, so that's up to the end of the year.
So in other words, anyone from the city can go onto your property and take your belongings?
If you had a violation and you were noticed of a violation, they can go on the property to remedy that violation.
If you had due notice and time to remedying yourself and refuse to, that's...
I call a question.
Okay. Do you want to say anything else? You called for a question, which means end of discussion. But would you like to say anything else before you do that? Okay, question has been called. Hearing no further discussion. We have a motion in a second on the table?
You have a try.
You're second? Okay, you're second. We have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
We have a motion in a session. He has to withdraw if he's gonna withdraw. I can't, we're going on.
Do you want to withdraw? Do you want to go?
We're going with because it's your name.
Okay. All right. I have a... Councilman Morgan has withdrawn his motion. We will look at all the papers, make sure that there's nothing that... Okay, item number four, discussion impossible actions retained to the current status of the Louisiana Military Museum. This one's on me. Council, it has been brought to my attention, and actually, it was posed... The question was posed to me by the board of the Military Museum. As you all know, the Louisiana Military Museum exists at the airport. Recently, they have had some changes in their board. Quite a few members have resigned. It is in financial struggles right now. And it is at risk of being closed permanently. We do lease a piece of property to the Military Museum. Their building, the building that they own is owned property owned by the city, as well as, you know, we provide the utilities. The reason I have this discussion on here, one is to make you all aware of the current state of the Military Museum. And because a proposal was asked of me, I want to hear the council's thoughts and basically comment, any thoughts on if you guys would like me and Bart to work on a proposal to either take over or assist with operations of the museum? Or do we want to look at any ways we might be able to help help them in this time until they can get their board restructured? So that's what I have to say right now about it. Mr. Glenn Swerres is in the audience, if you have any questions for him. I do currently sit on that board, and so I am handling this with pet gloves. But I think it's important that you guys know what's going on with the museum because it has become an important part of the city.
So what is the ask, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I don't think there is... The ask to me was, "Will the city take the museum?" And I said, "Well, this is not a question for me. This is a question for the council." And right after that question was asked, the board at the time took action, let the director go to save money, and multiple people on the board resigned. And so it's kind of in limbo right now. And so we are, I'm trying to help existing members on the board figure out what to do and how to restructure in a way that it could survive. But we don't know yet. I'm saying that the board is asking for multiple things. They're asking for anybody who wants to serve on the board that could become active. That's one ask. But what the ask is from us, I guess, is if the state will take over operations, one. Two, if not, or if you don't even want to consider it, would we be willing to help them with their lease payment or utility payments until such time as they can figure out how to...
What's the cost?
So it costs them about $100,000 to run that museum a year with a consultant. But the consultant has now been let go, so that's $3,000 a month that is gone away. They have a lease note to the city for $15,000 a year. Utility costs are about $500 a month. I don't have the full finances in front of me, but that's what I can recall from the work I've been doing. They do own two hangars at the airport, which have a value of about $600,000 that are part of their assets. They also own multiple other artifacts that have monetary value. I am reaching out to the state secretary of state's office to see if there's any assistance or recommendations they can give us. But basically, they are in limbo for the next couple of months until they can figure out how to restructure, so...
So mayor, I'm gonna ask that, you know, before we do anything as the council, that we would have a complete listing of all of the financial obligations that we would have to take on. In addition to that, I mean, is this building still owned by Joey LaRue and them as far as the hangar space and all that?
The entire, the museum sits in a lone building, which has five hangars. The records show that the Military Museum owns two of the five hangars, and Vector Aviation owns three. And the property underneath it is owned by the city.
I definitely would think that before we would take anything on. And Bart, my next question would be is, how can... Can we go bail people out of financial things with taxpayers' dollars?
No. I think we could take the assets, like we own the assets for the... I was asking Kathy to look at this before we walked in here. The Blacksmith Shop, right now, the city owns all the buildings and the property, and the nonprofit operates it for the city. I think it would have to be structured like that. Bart and I did not get a chance to look at that. This is what, before I put Bart through all the work, I mean, I need to know what y'all's temperature was on this before we do...
My temperature is cold, cold.
So we will look at, I'll take a look at what they're gonna owe the city. I'll bring the financials back to you guys. And then whatever action we'll take, we'll take at the next meeting or meeting after.
Okay.
Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five, to announce the community conversations for the 2029 Coastal Master Plan hosted by the Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority and Restore the Mississippi River Delta to be held on April 25, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Marion Parish Library in Abigail. This is me also. This is just an announcement. The CPRA is working on their 2029 Master Plan for the coast. And I know that normally, actually, we got notice that it was gonna be on the 11th, three days before. And so I kind of accidentally replied all and said I was not happy about it because we were having a community meeting, so they moved the date so that more people can attend it when we in conflict. So if you have thoughts or ideas or want to see the projects that are being proposed for coastal protection and restoration, or you have input on what you think could benefit or help not just Abigail but Marion Parish, then I think you should attend. And that meeting will be Thursday, April 25, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Marion Parish Library. We will also share that information on social media and all our platforms to try to get people out so that people are aware of what the state is proposing for their coastal projects. That's it. Any questions on that? Hearing none. Item number six, to approve payment of estimate for partial payment number six in the amount of $69,470.11 payable to Southern Constructors LLC relative to the Lafitte Pork Fishing Pier and Wharf Project. Okay, motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
I might just say that this represents 67% of the work complete. And so we've gone ahead of schedule and should be completed fairly shortly.
Yeah, it's pretty much, the work is done. We are waiting on the grass on the banks to take hold so we don't undo all the work that we put into sloping the banks. So I had to ask a few people to leave who were fishing illegally because we do have the pond closed right now for that reason. But it did come out really nice. And as soon as the grass can grow in, we go to open the pond back up and we appear for fishing. I'm just asking to stay off of it for a little while longer.
I have a question. Maybe we should prohibit fishing until the project... Well, I went today and somebody had a nice...
I actually recommended to Chris that we lock the park up for the next month. And we hadn't really decided, so if you guys want to discuss that at all, I know it's not really on the agenda, maybe we can discuss it at the end. But because people are not respecting it, we have posted signs that say, "No fishing, please stay off." But people are still going in and doing what we are asking them not to. but people are still going in and doing what we are asking them not to. Um, I, I myself am tired of having to ask people to leave and I thought that maybe we should just lock it up for the month to keep, try to keep everybody out of it. But, um, we hadn't come to our resolution on that.
Yeah, I, I wasn't authorized to let them.
You were always authorized.
I would say so, I wouldn't take that chance.
Yeah.
But they were there, they had.
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, you know, you don't wanna have it closed, but there's a reason for it. It's not just the, not just because we're trying to keep people in fish, it's because we just invested a lot of money in trying to make the bank safe and it's important that the grass takes hold before we get too much rain and, you know, let the, let the bank, uh, the grass grow so that it's secure. And that way, when people do fish in the banks, it's safe.
Yeah, we're signing it today.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we just paid sixty-nine thousand bucks, so I think we got the authority to shut it down.
Yeah, you may see that announcement come from me in the coming week. We, we haven't decided that, but now no one said they're going to. Okay, that's it, do we get, anyone vote on that yet? No, no, okay, we have a motion in a second, any questions or comments about that project, Mayor? Yes, Mr. Jean.
You definitely oughta keep closure on the, on the site. As long as the council hasn't approved, the job is complete. There's also some, some volatility that might happen that.
Yeah, we, we kept, uh, just the walking path open because we know people use the walking path, but the problem is they're using the gate and they're going in and, and doing what they're not supposed to do.
Well, restricted areas, all right, but where they work and that's just taken.
I'm not gonna actually take action, but are y'all okay with us making the call to close the park for the next couple of weeks so that happens? Y'all, I'm not gonna get a pushback from you guys, okay? But then I'm gonna go ahead and make that call, except I can't believe it, Chris, after this meeting, but that way y'all know. Um, and so the walking path won't be available, but it will reopen it as soon as we feel it's safe to do so. Okay, item number seven, to a, no, I didn't vote, y'all keep your bill. We have a motion in a second on table, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, to adopt the resolution committing additional local funds and authorizing the advertisement for bids for the site on St. Louis, Mr. Grayland, Grayland Avenue contingent upon approval from facility and planning control. Motion in a second on the table, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, to adopt the resolution pertaining to the municipal water pollution prevention, environmental audit report, January twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-one. Okay, motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, adopt, to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to submit a loan application form one hundred eight and all accompanying documents to Louisiana Department of Health for improvements to the water system and designate it, designate the mayor as official project representative to sign all required documents. Let me speak a little bit about this because this is a big one and I, I just want y'all to understand where we're at with this. As you all know, we've got some money to redo the water plant, but, uh, in the year and a half it's taken us to secure the funding and do the design. We've been struck by lightning, we've had all these occurrences, we've had all these maintenance, uh, issues. And so we've really been, Chris, myself, Marie, um, and the engineering team looking at not just what we applied for with the plant, with the initial funding, but what the overall needs of the plant are to, one, uh, you know, replace all the electronics, but also to, to, to have some redundancy built in in case of emergencies. We, we don't ever, we have a, we have backup systems in place, um, also to change out all the filter materials. So a project that should, started out as a one point five million dollar project to assess all the needs at the plant, including piping and painting piping and, and all of these issues, has now grown to be about a seven million dollar project, right, Mr. Jean? And of course, we have, uh, two point eight million dollars from the state. Whether or not we do the full scope of the project depends on the funding, right? And right now, there's funding through Louisiana Department of Health and Hospitals in revolving loan funds that are a loan, but the loans are up to forty percent forgivable. And so it's my recommendation that we put in the application for the total amount that we would want to do the project for, and if it's approved, see what the terms are and make a decision on the project at that point, how much of the scope of the project we do. Um, I think that this work's gonna need to be done in the next three years anyway and while we're doing it, it makes sense to do the comprehensive project. We figured out if no loan forgiveness, it would cost about, uh, each tax, if, if we went to, um, each bill for water, about two dollars a household per month for the next ten years and not would pay for the note, but hopefully it gets forgiven and it doesn't even come to that much out of the, the resident's pocket and the, and the business's pocket. But we're gonna have to address these issues and I feel like doing it comprehensively is the better way to do it. So it's, that's my recommendation, that we put in the application, we see the terms and we come back to the table and talk about it and make a decision how much of the scope we're gonna cover at that point. Mr. Jean, is that correct?
That's correct, and as we get further along, we're gonna get a closer number than what you're talking about right now.
Right, this is just a construction estimate from the engineer, we don't know for sure what that number is, so.
I have a motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute appropriate documentation to transfer ownership of a wooden home located on city property located at three oh three Jopery Street, Abigael, Louisiana, so that the home can be removed from the property. Board, first, sorry, you had, uh, one on this, any attorney?
Counsel, this is, uh, this is a home that we put up for bid. We had it appraised, we didn't receive any, any bids, uh, at the appraised value. And so now we're in the position where the city's gonna, uh, be, you know, incurring costs and they voted twenty thousand dollars to knock down this house, clean the property. So we found a contractor that's willing to do it for, um, no cost from the city. In exchange, he can move the house, which the city's gonna demolish anyway, and keep the house.
And this is the house that's on the property adjacent to the, um, fire station on Jopery, which is on the west side that we've been trying to get rid of for three years, I guess, four years.
The property is gonna be, it's, it's our property.
The land is remaining ours.
So he's just gonna take the house?
He's gonna take the house. And he's gonna clean the property, move some sheds, fences, trees, he's gonna.
I'll move, but.
Motion in a second on the table, any questions or comments, Chief Mayor, anything? Yes, ma'am, how much is the charge? How much, I don't know what the quote is, do you know?
He's not charged.
He's not charged anything, he's taking the house.
He's taking the house.
Yeah, in exchange, instead of us, because I think the quote was twenty thousand, twenty thousand. Same as the twenty thousand, so, yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, to approve the quote from Casco in the amount of ten thousand, four hundred and twenty proposals for the fire department, Chief Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, counsel, uh, I come here tonight asking y'all to spend a lot of money. Uh, the first one is to approve the quote from Casco for ten thousand dollars to replace all our tack line, our ancient three-gon line that we used to go in a house on every truck that we have. And the reason is because, uh, in the last couple of years, we have our hosts tested by a company and we have lost so much host, some of it's twenty, twenty-five years old and it just can't take it anymore. Yes, sir.
I move.
Motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number twelve, to approve the quote for a new Lucas chest compression system from Stryker in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine ninety-seven, Chief Mayor, you have this.
Everything I'm asked for tonight is in my budget.
Okay. Makes it fast. Makes it fast. Motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, to approve a quote for the Delta Fire and Safety in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty to repair a la, uh, the latter large truck. Motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number fourteen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. To approve Job Tale Subdivision Construction Plans and Drainage Impact Analysis. Who's here, who's got this one on the agenda? Kim?
Uh, we did, we submitted the plans, someone reviewed it.
Can you cover?
We reviewed the plans and specifications for not having a conflict of interest and we recommend, uh, the approval of the project as submitted. I move.
Thank you.
Okay, motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item R fifteen, to approve the recommendation of Abigael Planting Commission to approve the food truck park special use permit application from market to bill located at six oh two Cherry Street. Okay, I have a motion in a second on table, I know Jared Young is in the audience right here, if y'all have any questions for him, he's been working on this project since September.
Are you the guy that I talked to when I was walking?
That's me, yeah. And thanks for donating the trees.
Anytime, man, anytime.
So, so this is kinda somewhat old enough.
This is the first one that we get, uh, that, that the first food truck lot, and he has his food truck with a hybrid version where he's gonna have tents and, um, other things there, uh, so there'll be a space for, for, Jared, you wanna stop, you wanna say anything rather?
Uh, we're just looking to build a, an opportunity for people to have incubators and start businesses and stuff. Um, you know, for people who wanna be chefs, as far as be chefs, it's cheap and hard on food trucks, but to have a safe spot for them to be able to come and park where everybody knows, hey, that's where all the food trucks are, it's how you happen to look, you call, they weigh all that today. The other part is for people like me, I sell plants for a living, um, and it's hard for me to find a spot. Usually you only have a farmer's market, uh, one Saturday a month a year, uh, Tivodot is the other one, but you're still missing opportunities, you can't make a business run on one day, one day a month and everything. So this would give people the opportunity to sell their products seven days a week, um, underneath the same situation, but to be able to start businesses at a low cost.
I move, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second already, any questions or comments, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. Item number sixteen, discussion and possible action to request an appraisal of a building at three oh eight Charity Street, next to Abigael Police Department, Chief Mike Party. Okay, and do we have a second? Motion in a second on table, Chief Party, you wanna say anything?
Yes, just wanna, uh, let the council know that this is a building that I, I think could be very helpful for the police department. We would use it for evidence locker, train facility, meeting place, showers. They can be used for sleeping quarters during, uh, hurricanes. Uh, that's why we're here, we're gonna talk about, uh, maybe getting an appraisal and then with maybe Councilman Brady being in real estate, he gives some advice on what we should offer.
Let me ask you, where would the money come from?
Uh, from the city, because it would be a city-owned building.
It's not currently in our budget.
No, no.
But, but we would have to be.
So what you're saying is, we, we don't know where it is.
No, no, yes, sir.
And it's in bad shape right now.
It's in bad shape and I feel we can get it pretty cheap.
It's actually, it's actually blighted, we probably need to.
Councilman Brady, you're kinda, move on a little.
I've looked at it and, uh, I've, I've walked it, uh, with the chief.
Actually, all the councilmen have looked at it except you, you're just busy.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna.
And really, the condition of the property does not warrant the asking price. An appraisal would be appropriate.
So all we're doing is asking for an appraisal.
Correct.
That's it, that's it right now.
I'm good.
Do you have the money to do an appraisal, because it ain't cheap?
I think I'm gonna go to the council and individually ask for donations. No, just, no, I just wanted to start this off and get, get the council to consider it and look at it. If it's possible, maybe something we can do, if it's not possible, we just have to live with it. We don't, uh.
I think that was about five hundred bucks, when we get an appraisal.
I can find that in my budget.
It probably about five hundred dollars. But I will say this, that, well, you know, I'm sorry, Mayor, I will say this, that when I walked, when I went to, uh, State Street, right, we went there first, and that's, we have no storage room. And when I went to the police department on Cherry Street, they're now lining things up against the wall because the storage room that's available, that's, I, and so I'm just saying that if we can get it at a good price.
It's necessary.
And I don't like just spending money, you know, if it's being spent, I want it in my dish, you know?
Because before, before we buy a building for storage, we need to purge what we have that we can purge because just, I mean, don't, don't take out our other entities and buy more and more buildings for storage. That's what's wrong with our city, we need to get rid of the stuff that's in, you get rid of, not get rid of before we buy storage.
Yeah, and I also view, the evidence room is, it, there's, there's no space in it. The evidence, by law, that they must keep, there's no more room for it.
And, and it puts everybody, we, we have to provide a very secure area. Right now, it's getting old. Yes, sir, simply, yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seventeen, discussion and possible action pertaining to security and storage department, Chief Party, Delphine.
Yes, I handed out, uh, copies of a, a drawing that we had today. We did go and check this today, officer went out, show where all the cameras are. The back sheet are where the cameras are now. Most of those cameras do not really show what we're looking for. We're looking for entrances, exits from all the different apartments, make sure everybody's safe when they leave the apartments. Uh, some of those cameras look straight into oak trees, some of those cameras look straight down to the ground. Uh, they have twenty-four cameras, I think we have, uh, twenty of them that work, well, twenty-five now. But, uh, what we wanna do is we wanna work with them and recommend more lighting, more cameras and better positions. And, and that's just to let the council know. And then if they comply with that, uh, we're also recommending security guards. They still have full-time security guards, they have courtesy officers. The courtesy officers, uh, aren't there most of the time and they're not patrolling around there. They go out when there's a complaint between tenants next door to each other, so.
So, or, and again, this is, this is like, this, this was I go.
It won't.
It won't, so, wha- what do you think, they gonna work with us?
Well, they are, I'm in discussions with Andy B Z, who represents. And this is what he was waiting for, yeah. And, uh, we actually exchanged some more than else today, so, or, and all, I mean, they hemming and hawing a little bit, but they acquiesce in, in a lot of things, so hopefully we can get to where the chief wants to be.
Now, they are looking at possibly losing one of the courtesy officers, name, Lon is really helpful.
If they hire a security guard for that guy's place.
Lon is gonna be leaving out of May, they only have the one left, which would be Cory, uh, Borrell, and then, uh, Luke, but Luke's kinda hard to get sometimes. Cory, I think, works full-time.
I wouldn't know that.
Could we get like, just keep it on the agenda every month?
Yes, and get an update, yes.
It don't have to be every, but every, every, every year.
But, have you seen the camera?
Okay, so we don't need, uh, any action on that one?
No, no, actually, it's not.
Oh, there's nine departmental reports and updates, engineers, Mr. Jean? Anything? Kim? Nothing? Attorney? Nothing, or, public works, sorry to criticize.
All good.
All good? Are you sure?
That's what you're always supposed to say, all good.
No, I should, I should have moved.
Request the time to, uh, any questions? Good?
I want to talk to you, uh, hey, Joe.
Parks and Recreation Coordinator, anybody here from Parks and Rec? No, not tonight, okay. Uh, Mayor, I'm just gonna say thank you to all who participated in the walking tours as well as the planning meeting last week. Um, I thought we had some really good community conversations, I look forward to seeing, uh, all of the feedback that was given and then, uh, having additional conversations based on, on that feedback. Um, and we will have subsequent meetings in this upcoming year, so look forward to that. Um, I hope that we can come up with some really creative community solutions and, uh, I know that, that, uh, that plan is gonna bring about some impactful change for all areas of our city, so I'm excited for that. Um, I also wanted to, uh, well, I kinda lost my train of thought there. I might, I might just skip over me for right now, I might come back. Chief Police, uh, Mike Party.
Yes, just one thing real quick. Uh, new law was passed this year, effective twelve A M. April nineteenth, this Friday. Any person seventeen years or older that gets arrested will be booked as an adult. Uh, there's no questions anymore, they don't flip it back and forth. If you're seventeen, you commit a crime, you will be arrested and booked as an adult.
But Chief, I thought that goes until fifth of July. They, the state basically sent an email.
They sent an email, an email out early.
They sent an alert to all the law enforcement agencies stating that this Friday it will go on time back. This one's that early.
Like midnight Thursday.
Can you make sure that we get a copy back?
Yeah, I think.
Sure, sure.
Um, and that being said, Chief, uh, I, I would like an update on the juveniles that were, uh, doing all the.
I, I, I do have that, if you'd like something right now.
No, uh, I just wanna make sure that.
No, no, we, we have something working on it, I have a file on it.
This morning and then that's more complaints tonight and I personally came and contacted them twice last night, so I wanna make sure that we're holding both the juveniles and the parents accountable in that situation.
So you say, this Friday?
This Friday. Hey, one second.
We've been letting them know for a year that, that, uh, the juveniles need to be off the street if they commit a crime.
Yeah, I'm showing Slaney putting in plates, but they get seventeen hundred dollars for damage to my stuff.
Maria?
Excuse me, I'll.
Okay, uh, that's it for the Chief of Police, Fire Chief Junior, nothing. Council members, Councilman Campbell?
Just two things, the pavilion at Campbell Park, we need to advertise how that's gonna work because we've been having trouble, um, with people and, um, I'm having a senior moment, so that's it.
Like me, you're professional, you're very. Councilmember Bruce, sorry.
I know, I just want the chief to make sure that he get back with your office on the, um, the law that.
Yes.
Oh, the juvenile law, yes. And make sure, yeah, I'll give you a bunch of copy of that.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Bruce, sorry.
Uh, anybody in the audience that wants delicious boiled shrimp? The gentleman in the first row, Mr. Glenn Swear with the American Legion, they are selling tickets for April twenty-first, this coming weekend. Pick up boiled shrimp at a great price and support a great organization of veterans in our city. Thank you.
I had to go with boiled shrimp this week.
Where's it at?
It's actually Knights of Columbus. It's not the American.
It's not the American Legion, no.
It's what?
Right, correction, it's the Knights of Columbus that sells, not, American Legion members are working with it, but it's, it's to benefit the Knights of Columbus.
Where's it, where's the pickup?
Uh, next to the main park. Good, Glenn Swear has the tickets if you wanna buy.
Next to the. Councilman Tuchet. Councilman Party.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sure you're cool, then maybe you can get with me, uh, I want to, uh, try my best to upgrade Park of Art on Braceeland Avenue. That's one of my, that's one of my favorite trees. Well, we can start by taking that Constantine down at the top, cause a lot of the neighbors, they feel like they in prison. They walk in the forks and all, but we'll remove all that top Constantine, bro. See how it goes and upgrade this, they got like a fridge and, uh, we're gonna see if we can fix all the things that are broken in there, paint, do some painting, you know, clean it all up.
I actually, I put some money in the city budget for that park, so we have a start on that.
I had to beat you to put in there, I'm not just betting there. Man, uh, and, 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 I appreciate it, we got you, get that thing, man, I had a good time. And, uh, I got with Marcelo and Marcelo, I was getting my day, we can have a baby, you know, whatever, whenever we get the, we open the door with the water barrier, all cleaned up and fixed up, so.
Good job.
I look forward to it.